I know you got another minute, but I just started the recorder so you know what's on when you get to that.
And Cheryl, when you're doing the minutes, if you need access to the recording, and we can pull it up if you need to reference anything. I know you'll take good notes, but just in case, just know that there's a backup.
Thank you. That would be wonderful.
Okay, I have seven o'clock.
So do I.
All right, I'm now going to declare the zoning board, the Barrington Zoning Board of Adjustment called to order. I'm going to read from a prepared statement. As Chair of the Zoning Board of Adjustment, due to the COVID-19 coronavirus crisis, and in accordance with Governor Sununu's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this board is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to the meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, this is to confirm that we are, we are utilizing the Microsoft team for this electronic meeting. All members of the board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through the Microsoft team, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and, if necessary, participate in the meeting through dialing the following phone: 1-929-338-4464 and conference ID 463690418, or call 603-664-0330, or email jhuckins@barrington.nh.gov, or join Microsoft Teams meeting. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call votes. And I'm going to ask the board members to identify themselves for the record.
Mary Smalls.
Cheryl Huckins.
George Bailey.
Ray Demaris.
And Chair Karen Forbes. So we're going to call the first case, which is leftover from, was continued from last month, which is 112-27-gr/hco-20-zba, owner Mark E. Brondel-Nippo Pond LLC. Is the applicant present?
I am. Are you able to hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Do you want to just briefly, perhaps, describe what you were seeking last time? Because we have a board member who wasn't here last time, or two, who are on, who weren't here. And then we go over the plan that you just submitted.
Sure, you broke up a little bit. You're saying just the overall plan of what we're trying to do?
Yeah, the overall plan of what you're trying to do, because there are two members that are here that weren't here last month.
Sure, so we're looking to build a single-family home on Harland Drive. Due to the, there's a private right-of-way that runs on the backside of the property, and we're able to build a 36-by-26 house. But what we'd like to do is put an attached garage to the building, which will be 26-by-24. Unfortunately, it encroaches on the 40-foot setback on the right-of-way. So what we're asking for is relief to, from that setback, to build the garage on the property.
Right, and your building, the house you're building is more than 75 feet from the Nippo Pond, right?
Yes, it is. I supplied a new survey done that was stamped, and it has the, all the setbacks on there.
So what you're seeking now is, um, do you want to tell us what you're seeking, the variance? Because I see three different dimensions, four different dimensions that are on the plan that weren't on it before.
Yes, so what I'm showing there is when it came in last time, I put 25 feet from the right-of-way. That's, you know, within the 40-foot setback. So what I showed was the closest corner would be 23.9 feet from the right-of-way that runs in the back. So I just showed the other three corners. I think I supplied another diagram that showed that the only encroaching part of the building is just that corner, about half of the garages in the conforming setback. So what I showed you there was the 23.9, and then the back corner where the back of the house would, you know, start the attached garage is 43.3, and then from the other side, 39.9.
And the size of the lot again is how big?
I'm sorry?
How big is the lot, the size of it?
1.6 acres.
The roadway that goes through there, the right-of-way, is actually on his property, but it's still a private road, so he's got to maintain the setback, even though he owns the land that the right-of-way is on, in the land on the other side.
Okay, so I got it now. So the right-of-way goes through his lot.
That is correct.
So what's it at half, actually? Any questions from any board member?
None.
I have.
George, did you say you have questions?
No, I said I have none, Madam Chair.
Okay, anybody else? Is there anybody else here to speak in favor of the application? Anybody here to speak in opposition to the application? Hearing none, we're going to close the public testimony portion of the meeting, and the board will discuss. Any comments from anyone?
No.
Chair, no, I don't have a problem with it.
No, me either.
All right.
I don't either.
Okay, we went into it in detail last time. I think he, during the last meeting, he addressed all the standards, and the record is clear on that. I think it's a, the issue is the private road is going through the middle of the lot, and he has shoreline issues. So he needs to stay away from the shoreline. I think it's the size of the lot, which makes it, that's a special condition. Granting the variance would be consistent with the spirit of ordinance. There will not be any diminution of surrounding values, and it would do substantial justice. Any comments sent from anybody?
I make a motion to accept grant waiver.
So, all right, so we're going to do a roll call vote, then?
Is this a waiver or variance? Variance, isn't it?
Variance.
Yep. Your second? All right, I'm going to call the roll. Mary?
Yes, I accept.
Yeah, yes.
George?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
And Karen Forbes, I vote yes. So the board has granted the request for the variances.
Thank you very much, everybody, for the effort and having the meeting tonight. I very much appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Good luck in your venture.
Thank you.
So the next case on the agenda is 118-68-gr-20zba variance owner Thomas B. Clark. Is the applicant present?
Yes, I am.
Do you want to present the case?
I would be happy to do that. Thank you. Do you want me to read through it, or just summarize it, or what's the best?
I would start with explaining what you're looking for, and then address the standards.
Sure. The, I'm looking to replace, we purchased the property in 1999, and there was a metal Quonset hut structure on it. It's been there since then. I'm looking to replace that with a single-car garage. The existing Quonset hut structure does not meet the side setbacks on the 18,000-square-foot lot. But to build the structure, I'm looking to maintain the minimum setback of 16.6. I'm going to leave and not touch. But on the other side, I'd like to reduce this existing setback from 29.3 to 25.7 feet.
Okay, do you want to address the standards, then?
I believe Article 4, Section 4.1.1, side setback in this area is 30 feet.
So the standard, so the standard is the standard for a variance, right?
I believe so, yes.
So you need to address, present evidence why special conditions exist in the lot, why granting the variance will not result in diminution. You have to address the five criteria in the application, and present evidence on those.
The, and I'd like to say that I proofread this five times, and then I read it again Monday morning under Section 1, and I found out that I left a word out. I talked to Barbara, and she said to bring that up, which under 1, it says the existing conditions already less than the current ordinance lock with does not allow for positioning another way to eliminate the problem. So I left the word "not" out. I apologize for that, but she said to bring that up tonight.
Noted, noted.
Sorry about that. I think, I already have state approval in terms of the project will improve the waterfront protection and utilization and aesthetics of the area. This and surrounding property values will increase as a result of removing the old, ugly metal building. I think the adjacent property owners have already indicated their approval to this, and they think it's going to be better. And the granting the variance will not materially change the existing conditions of the utilization of the lot.
Okay, are there any questions from the board members?
I have a question, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, George.
Do you plan on putting any utilities upstairs other than electricity?
Just electricity, sir.
Thank you.
Ray, any questions?
Nope, I don't see a problem with it.
Mary?
No, it looks good.
And Cheryl?
No, I have no problem. Nice-looking building.
Thank you.
Is there anybody here to speak in favor of the application? Anybody in here to speak in opposition to the application? Hearing none, we'll close the public testimony portion, and the board will discuss the application. Any comments from anybody?
I think it's reasonable, yeah.
I agree with Ray. It is reasonable.
Yes, I agree.
It's another odd-shaped lot. It's almost a triangle. It narrows as it goes to the rear, and you have the setback from the lake. It's probably the best you can do with that lot. Any other comments, Cheryl?
No, like I said, I think it's going to be good for the property value of the surrounding properties, because it looks good.
Okay, um, is there a motion?
We make a motion, break the variance?
Oops.
George?
I'll second Ray's motion.
So is the roll call vote, Mary?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
And Chair Karen Forbes, yes. Mr. Clark, your request for variance has been granted.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your support and help. Have a good night.
You too. Okay, is, the next one is Case 261-39-gr-20-zba appeal owner Richard Kelsey. Is the applicant present?
Yes, I am.
You want to present, you want to present your case? Are you on the phone, or you?
No, I'm in the meeting.
Okay. Can you speak up a little bit louder, because I can't hear you?
Okay, yes, I can speak up. Um, let's see, so I guess, I guess there's two things. One is that, as I understand it, so here's what's happening. I have, I bought this island on Mendham's Pond. It has a little cabin, which is mostly stone, but has a section that's a sort of additional section made of wood. And a couple of years ago, it was heavily vandalized. The windows were smashed, the door ripped off, and it was just really badly damaged. So I eventually found some people who come out and work on it, and they've been rebuilding it. And somewhere, because of the quality of the construction and stuff, we ended up just tearing it down and rebuilding the wooden section on the same footprint. I did not apply for a building permit, partly because I didn't think anybody would care, and partly because it started out as a relatively simple repair job, and then kind of escalated from there. And now it turns out that in order to get a building permit, I need a variance, because there is no road access for emergency vehicles.
He's actually not asking for a variance. It's an appeal of RSA 67441. There is a difference.
Yeah, yes, it turns out this is all much more complicated than I originally understood.
Is that statute in our packet?
I'm not sure if I attached the whole statute. I think I did on the first one that you did on the other end, but not this one. You got an RSA book?
Yeah, I got it.
And it's going to be Section 2, the way they talk about zoning variance relief?
George, read that, or George, sorry. John, read that RSA again. I can pull it up on the screen for everybody.
Okay, 67441. Then you want to go to Roman Nummo 2, and it talks about a variant, I mean, the appeal through the zoning board to get a building permit.
Okay, I have 2, 2A.
Just the 2.
Yes, 2, okay. Yep, I'll pull it up. Just a second will be highlighted for everybody.
41.
Roman Nummo 2?
That's correct.
All right, so whenever the enforcement of the provisions of this section would entail practical difficulty or unnecessary hardship, and when the circumstances of the case do not require the building, structure, or part thereof to be related to existing or proposed streets, the applicant for such permit may appeal from the decision of the administrative officer having charged with the issuance of permits to the Zoning Board of Adjustment in any municipality which has adopted zoning regs. So the criteria are whenever the enforcement of the provisions of this section would entail practical difficulty or unnecessary hardship, one, that's one. When the circumstances of the case do not require the building, structure, or part thereof to be related to existing or proposed, that's two. So there's two criteria, right?
I think there's a little more, and we got it from Laura, because she referenced.
Oh, here it is. Local may make any reasonable exception and shall have the power to authorize or issue a permit subject to such conditions as it may impose if the issuance of the permit or erection of the building would not tend to distort the official map or increase the difficulty of carrying out the master plan upon which it is based. And if erection of the building or issuance of the permit will not cause hardships in future purchases or undue financial impact on the municipality. So it looks like there's like four things.
Yeah, and Richard actually included all his application. You should have all that in your package.
Oh, I see it right here. Okay. So, Richard, do you want to address those?
Yeah, unfortunately, I don't have a copy of that in front of me, of the form that I filled out.
Do you have a copy, Connor? You can put it up on the screen?
It is on screen.
No.
I can, just one second. So just tell me where I need to scroll to, John.
Yeah, right now you're in the first one. That's where he's going to start.
Perfect.
Can you see that, Richard?
Yes, I can. Yeah, so the issue is, right, the little cabin is on an island. And so, and because of the vandalism and just the age of the structure, it really needed to be rebuilt. If it, without rebuilding it, the cabin's not really useful.
Okay, keep on going.
Okay, and then streets are so, those streets are involved. It's on an island. And the, for the footprint is going to be, is the same, right? It's just rebuilding the same structure. I, yes, I mean, it's continuing to be residential, well, I mean, it's sort of residential, right? It's a little cabin. No one's actually going to live there. And so it's really no impact on the, on the planning. And obviously, I mean, if without the cabin, the island is really not very useful. So it would be a real hardship. And it should not have any impact on the, any financial impact on the town.
So I'm confused. What kind of structure, it's not a year-round house, right?
Say again?
It's not going to be a year-round house, right?
No, no, definitely not. You can't get to it in the winter.
There's no electricity and no septic or well that attach to this building?
No, not, well, no, not in use. Just, there is a, there is a shallow well that's been there. I don't know how long. I don't know if anyone's ever, I don't know how long it was actually used, but it certainly, there's no plans to use it.
Oh, I guess I should say there's no plumbing tied to the house.
Yes, there is no plumbing tied to the house.
So what are you going to use it for?
Just as a cabin. We can go, just to go out, you know, go out there for weekends.
With no septic?
Well, this is, so here's the thing. This is where I, where I'm not sure what the right, the right thing to do is, right? The cabin, the cabin has been there for, I don't know, since there it is. It was built back in the 30s. It's been, the previous owners, you know, basically spent all summer out there. And no, there's no septic. They had a pit outhouse, which is not, I would, I would, I would put in something, they're composting something, because it doesn't, a pit seems like a bad idea. But, yeah, so that's the cabin. It's been, like I say, until, we bought it about five years ago now. We haven't actually used it because of all of the damage and the problems with them draining Mendham's Pond for a while. And so, yeah, we just go up, go up there for the weekends. There's no question about it.
Does anybody else on the board have questions?
To say is that the house was built in 1940, and the tax card shows that it's been paid all along, so that's all I have a comment to. But there's no amenities whatsoever, and I can't understand how somebody can go out there unless they're going to be polluting the lake. So that's, that's my thoughts.
Anybody else? Ray, you have any questions?
Yeah, the picture that's up right now is not what I see out there on the pond now. There's a, there's a new addition, which I think is one of the pictures, so.
No, well, okay, it's in the, it's not a new addition. I think that there's a, there's a two-piece of, so the wooden part is at the far end of the cabin, right?
Right, which you can't see in that picture. Is that what I take it?
No, the reason, you can't see it in that picture. So the one, we didn't change the footprint. We changed the roof line. The wood part of the cabin had a much flatter roof line that, so it stuck out, it was sort of lower in the middle.
Connor, if you bring up the colored picture that's, that's in there.
In the application?
That's correct.
The one that I put in the package that Stephen Jeffries had brought in. It's a colored, like a photograph-type picture.
Okay, one second. I'm looking for it in the application document here. I'll pull it up before I send it over to the.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Oh, so Mr. Kelsey, you're saying that, am I hearing you right? You're basically changing the roof to a pitched roof or a more pitched roof rather than the previously flatter roof?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, were the skylights original, or did you put them in yourself?
We put the skylights in.
So you said not only did you change the roof, but the skylight?
No, no, the skylights are in the part, are in the original piece of roof.
John, you got unmuted yourself.
You got unmuted yourself. Nobody can hear you, except me.
Can you hear me now? I'm unmuted.
Okay, go ahead again.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, so if you go to the application, I mean, Mr. Kelsey, when I got ahold of him, that's the one there, that's the picture. You can see the addition on that, the part on the left-hand side of that picture. It wasn't really an addition. It was rebuilding of what was there. But if you look at this other part I brought up on the building code where it talked about repairs, you can do windows siding, roofing, all those types of things as repairs that does not require a permit. But it does say that if you change anything structurally, you did. So when I was going over with Mr. Kelsey about what he did with the work, when he told me he did the stuff on the roof and rebuilt the walls, that in turn meant he did some structural work, which in turn meant he needed a permit. And if the damage wasn't done, to damage the roof and the walls, and he did, the siding and the windows and the skylights, that stuff can be done without a permit, if you look at the section in the building code that I included.
So Ray, did you get your question answered?
Apparently that was there. It's new construction. I don't recall seeing it like that. So I'm also on Mendham's, by the way, so I see this property often from the water.
Stephen Jeffries just joined.
The picture, Madam Chair, the picture that's on the, for the property on the tax card, it does not show the addition of that building at all on the tax card, but it does.
That's why sketch actually showed.
Wait, wait, only one person can talk at a time.
What I was going to say, John, is that it does show it on the drawing on the bottom part of the tax map. So the picture is older than the floor plan that's on the section below, so.
I think, I think it's the angle of the picture compared to the sketch. It's two different things.
That's correct. That's what I'm saying, John.
So it is on the tax map?
It was. Even the old tax cards that went back 20 years showed the footprint being exactly what it is now.
Okay. So he can get a permit after the fact, and there's no penalty? Or would there be a penalty?
Well, we, the whole concept, this is just a rough frame thing, like he said. I can go and look at that, and I can see everything that was done to see that it was done to code. So it's not like, well, hopefully, it's not like he has to rip anything apart so I can verify that it was done. We really tried to work more on the code compliance, because we really believe in the whole idea of the safety to where we just want to make sure that the buildings are safe for people to use.
Okay.
If he were to be issuing a CO, is there any requirements or any utilities or any other amenities to be in the house before you can issue a CO?
No, this is an existing cabin for a rough cabin use. So he could still continue using it for the way he is. Now, I wouldn't be issuing him a CO as a dwelling unit, because it's not a dwelling unit. It doesn't come even close to qualifying to be a dwelling unit. It's going to be like a recreational structure that, by the Town of Barrington's things, you can have like a recreational use up to 180 days a year, but you've got to have some type of sanitation on site. And that's, we have a few places like that in town. A lot of them are on the lake, too. That's where you see the campers and stuff that people normally have.
What kind of sanitation are you talking about, John?
A porta potty is what most of them put out there. Some of the ones with campers, they actually have, like, the holding tanks and stuff, and they've supplied pumping records for me when I've gone out to check to make sure, you know, that they do have some type of sanitation if I get a complaint, you know, showing me how they are taking care of the sanitation. If he couldn't actually get, like, say, one of those composting toilets out there, that would require something on the permit, too, because that would, you know, have to have, like, LP gas to burn them, is what most of them are set up as. So we could go out and verify that he has a composting toilet, and that would meet that requirement, too.
Okay. So he couldn't put insulation in this, could he?
There's nothing that says that he couldn't insulate it, but unless it's got provisions for cooking, cleaning, and hygiene, it's not considered a dwelling unit, by the way. There's nothing that says that he couldn't insulate it, but unless it's got provisions for cooking, cleaning and hygiene, it's not considered, um, a dwelling unit by the way the building code works.
Okay.
And he has like this existing grandfathered use of a cabin, I mean, a lot of times you see them like real rustic hunting cabins and stuff like that, this one just happens to be on an island instead of the middle of the woods.
Okay.
Mr. Kelsey, are you planning on putting some kind of septic there, portable or?
I mean, I definitely need to do something, and so that's one of the things that, that we're still working on, so I guess what I should do is talk to, um, and I don't know who it is who is talking there about what, what systems are permissible. And then, um, to do something that's, that's, uh, you know, fits with the, the rules.
That would be John Hudson's, who you would say.
And that would make the existing situation better than it was previous to Mr. Kelsey owning it.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely, like I said, they just had a pit outhouse, and that's not, I mean, that's just not, clearly not acceptable.
Is there any other questions from the board members?
No.
No.
George?
No, I don't, ma'am, thank you.
Ray?
No.
Um, all right, is there anybody else here to speak in favor? Um, I think I heard Mr. Jeffrey join.
That's correct.
Um, I know that you've submitted a letter in opposition that was, um, submitted to all the members of the board, and I think, Mr. Kelsey, you have a copy of Mr. Jeffrey's letter?
Yes, I do.
Okay, so Mr. Jeffrey, you want to speak?
Well, my concern is the law says the town cannot issue a permit. And, and this structure certainly has a relation to a road, just by its, by its nature. And that, that is specifically addressed in the RSA. And it requires bringing this before town vote. I, I don't understand how you think you can bypass state law. And I'd like you to read the letter and address every issue that's contained in it.
You want Mr. Kelsey to respond to it?
If you'd like. And I'd like every response included in the minutes, so that I have a record of what.
Mr. Jeffrey, just to start, your issues are addressed in your letter, um, you're in a butter, you were not provided notice of the hearing?
No. No.
Okay, Connor, could you bring up that 67441 again that you had up earlier? If you go to that 67441, it kicks you to, um, how do you got to apply 67415? 67415 refers you to the notice that's got to go to.
Do you have the RSA up, what part of the RSA do you want me to go to, John?
Um, okay, you see the last bit that he's got highlighted there in blue? It says that it shall be subject to the manner described in RSA 67415.
Yeah.
So if you go to 67415, it talks about the public hearing of appeals, and it says that notice should be given under 675, seven colon seven. When you go to 6757 colon seven, it doesn't require any butters to be notified. Because, um, it's, it's got to be in a general newspaper, it's got to be, um, you know, and then reg, all the notices that you would have is though you were changing zoning, that's, it's the same, that's the thing that goes, let's say someone does an administrative appeal where I deny them a building permit. It's, this is the process that it has to go through according to the RSA.
Okay, well, not only that, but he's wrote a lengthy letter and he's participating in the hearing, so.
Yeah, but I mean, as far as him getting a notice actually physically sent to him, it wasn't required by the RSA, and at last month's meeting, um, when he was in on the other one that he appealed, I explained to him in front of the whole board, he wasn't going to get one because the law says that he doesn't get one.
Yeah.
And even, it's, it's not across the stream or a brook either, I mean, it's, it's across the lake.
Okay. I have to bring up the water, um. Let's see. Say, you said it's incomplete and defective, Mr. Jeffrey?
Yep.
How's it incomplete?
Well, I don't, I didn't see, well, like, there's a list of things in there, but I didn't see a record of the building permits that had been issued for that structure. And my recollection of seeing it, the only thing was a, a dilapidated stone cabin with no roof on it.
And that was during, you know, when we needed building permits.
You know, the structure was created in the 40s, it wouldn't have required a building permit, but.
All right.
Anything that falls down, they got a year to replace it, right, or fix it, not 20.
Um.
Hang on, when, when I purchased the property about five years ago, it had a roof on it, it had the, the stone structure was usable, they were still using it at that point, it wasn't a dilapidated structure. It was a new.
My point is, if work was done without a building permit, it remains illegal. It doesn't like become legal after some given period of time.
Okay, why don't we listen to Mr., um, Mr. Kelsey, you don't need to respond right now, let's just take Mr. Jeffrey's letter, we can deal with it. We don't want to exchange this between the two of you, okay? Um, anything else in your letter you want to point to, Mr. Jeffrey?
Let me look at it. Well, the lot has no road frontage, and the town requires every lot to have road frontage.
Well, that's why we're here.
You're going to need at least a variance for the road frontage requirement.
Well, we're under 674. Mr. Jeffrey, we're under 67441.
That's correct.
Yeah.
But do, don't lots require road frontage in Barrington?
Well, you can keep on going, but that's not what the statute says, statute is made for a situation like this where there's no road frontage, and it says, has no frontage on any class of highway, no frontage on any roadway approved by the planning board, and it's how you get a building permit, so go on through your list.
You want me to go through the list?
Yeah, I want you to address it to the board, so we have your letter, but we want to hear from you to explain what your objections are, this is your opportunity. I mean, this is in the record, but if there's something more you want to add or expand on, then we'd like to hear it now.
Well, I'm taking my cues from a, a legal case in Meredith with a similar situation with an island, and the judge in the case required that they get a variance to the road furniture requirement. You know, they had a similar requirement, also the island is less than two acres, so it doesn't meet the minimum lot size, so that needs to be addressed. 67441 supersedes any local ordinance code of regulation, which is what the ZBA is and does, and, and there is no exemption, you know, the, uh, to allow the ZBA to override state law. The state law doesn't talk about whether something is a camp or a, you know, two-season structure or whatever. This is a habitable structure, and it's easy enough for somebody to bring a, a cooking stove into that structure. When I look at dwelling units in the ZO, it says rooms that provide complete living facilities for one family, including kitchen facilities or equipment for cooking, or provisions for the same, including rooms for living, sleeping, bathing and eating. From this definition, and the one, another one on habitable space, uh, bathrooms are not considered habitable spaces. Neither is a, like a shower. So as far as I'm concerned, this is a habitable structure, and I've certainly lived in a lot less. Again, the island has no road frontage, they need 200 feet, and the, and the problem is, there's no provision for emergency response to the island. How are you going to get a, a fire truck to the island? Or, or an ambulance? And the state fire code requires an adequate road access. And basically, the responsibility is going to fall on the town, and that's why a town vote is required. And I'm concerned about even the, the access to the island, the deeds for the island don't provide for a deeded access. Now, I'm aware that they may be using McDaniel's Shore Drive, but that brings up another issue, is you can't extend an pertinent easement to a non-dominant estate, and the islands are not a dominant estate to the property of McDaniel's Shore Drive. Now, I know, uh, I know why someone might think they can do that, but I went through a court case not too long ago where this very issue was, uh, brought up.
Anything else, Mr. Jeffrey?
Um, I believe you need, um, a certified plot plan to show the wetlands on the island, because there may be, um, concerns for wetland buffers. Like I say, I'm not sure that entire building was, was constructed with a building permit, any part of it that was built without a building permit when they were applicable would be illegal. And would need to be addressed, and I don't see any of that information in this file that I reviewed.
John, what was the definition of habitable, what, what does he, what makes it a habitable dwelling under the code?
Cooking, cleaning and hygiene, so that would be a kitchen facility, a bathroom facility, and a place for, you know, you to dwell in, you know, like sleeping and, you know, sitting or whatever.
And what we, what condition would we need to put on this to say that it doesn't become a habitable?
Um, I'm not sure, I mean, you could just say that it's not to be, um, the, the building permit you're allowing is just to maintain the structure and to fix the structural integrity, and no permit shall be issued that can allow this thing to become a permanent year-round structure or dwelling. I think if you put it in some caveat like that, I'd be limited into what I can give them a building permit to do.
Okay.
There's nothing in 67441 that addresses whether something is a year-round or a single season, it's, it's irrelevant. It's whether somebody could stay there overnight as a, as an, you know, occupy that structure. And that's what makes it relative to a road, it's not that somebody's proposing to build a road, it's the kind of structure, that's a structure for human occupation. You know? You know, it's not a barn for some goat, you know, it's not a tool shed. This is a structure for human habitation. And that's why it's relative to a road, and because of that, RSA 67441 applies, and the ZBA cannot grant an exception to the law. The law supersedes any local regulations.
Mr. Kelsey, do you want to respond to anything that Mr. Jeffrey said?
Uh, no, these are, I'm not, I'm not a lawyer and I'm not conversant with any of this, so, so no, I can't respond at this time.
Okay.
Karen, can I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
I'm seeing a lot of legal stuff here that I'm still confused myself, and I would like to continue this case and get a legal opinion for us on this. I supplied one for the last one, and I think that you guys still have it in your packages, do you have? You can't put it up on the screen because it's considered a client turn of privilege, it came from Laura Specter when you did the other island. And she, when Stephen came in with the appeal on the other one.
Yeah, but this one has other things going on too, more so.
It's actually the same thing they were just trying to maintain, the only reason they got a permit on the other one was because, well, the other one actually had electricity going to the island, and he did some electric work, but he also changed the structure, those are the two things he got a permit for, the other stuff he was doing didn't require a permit.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Okay, this, I, I worked, I, I know this structure's been here, I, I knew the women that owned it. Um, it's been here, it's grandfathered, and Mr. Kelsey is correct, when he bought it, there was not that much damage, if any, done to it, it was just old. So it's a grandfathered building that was always used as a rustic cabin, and he plans to continue that use. He's asking for a permit for some structural work he did to repair it, but it hasn't been changed, it hasn't been expanded. If we get a plot plan and there's seasonal wetlands on it, I don't know that that changes anything for a building that's been there, I believe, a lot more than 20 years.
It's been there since 1940.
Yeah, so I don't understand, I don't understand this, this complaint.
So here's, here's, let's go over it one more time. 674 allows a town or municipality to exempt lots from the requirements. The other method is that the ZBA can grant an exception if it finds, one, complying with the statute would entail practical difficulty or unnecessary hardship. In order to comply, he would have to build a bridge from the edge of the shore of Mendham's Pond.
Yeah.
Two, the circumstances of the case do not require the building, structure or part thereof to be related to existing or proposed streets. So it's a rustic cabin, it's always been a rustic cabin, um, I like the language that John raised previously. Three, the erection of the building would not tend to distort the official map, there's no way it would distort the official map.
There is no official town map for Barrington.
Four, the erection of the building would not increase the difficulty of carrying out the master plan. Five, the erection of the building will not car, cause hardship to future purchasers. He's just structurally repairing the building that was in existence before. Six, the building would not cause undue financial impact on the municipality. That, that's the criteria, six of them.
Well, the hardship for future owners is a, is the fact that it has no access.
Excuse me, Mr. Jeffrey, we're speaking now, this is not part of the public portion of the hearing, we're not going to argue it, we're not going to debate it, the board is asking clarification, we're just going over what the standard is. Ray, did you hear, did you see that, that wasn't, that wasn't our packet from the last month?
I still think there's a lot going on here, I'd like to get a review, that's, that's my feeling, I mean, this is, yes, it's been there a long time, but if it, you know.
I also included, um, a page out of, um, Hot Road to Travel, where I explained that the only reason something like this could possibly be granted would be like for a rustic cabin or something, and that's actually in your package too.
Right.
Madam Chair?
Yeah, George?
Thank, thank you, I'd like to point out that back in, uh, 2014, the property was bought for, uh, in the neighborhood $220,000. And then on the last tax card I have for, uh, '19, it shows that there is a, uh, extra features, which means extra taxes, they're charging him for, uh, one hearth and two docks, a total of $9,800, and if you go over on the other side for the assessing office, he has his property value at 44.5 and the $9,800, but then he has the, the land value of 144,200. And also, if you go up under the notes section, you'll see that, uh, the baitment was denied, and there was, uh, several items for, uh, listings. And all I'm trying to do is add credence to, uh, uh, what Ray was, uh, requesting that we take, uh, further legal assistance and really, uh, cover ourselves with the town and with everything else. Thank you.
I have another question. On access, on access, um, the sisters, did they access, is this accessible off, um, McDaniel's Shore Drive, is that how you get out to that island?
Are you asking me?
Yes.
Yeah, yes, we, we, uh, the, the sisters that owned it, uh, had access via the dam access road.
Okay.
But, uh, that seemed, especially, that seemed, uh, potentially problematic, they had no deeded access, they simply had a letter of permission. So we, we purchased the, the lot on McDaniel's Shore Drive so we could get, uh, access.
Okay, so you do have legal access to launch your boat out to get there?
Yeah.
Okay, I remember when you did that, yep. Thank you.
Mary, what are your thoughts?
I like what Cheryl said about the grandfathered in, I mean, it's been in use that way, um, it should stay grandfathered in. Uh, but I also feel that maybe it wouldn't hurt to have legal action, legal, um.
Opinion.
Opinion, also, just to verify our opinions.
Let me ask you a question, um, John, did, um, you provide counsel with Mr. Jeffrey's letter? Um, John, did, um, you provide counsel with Mr. Jeffrey's letter?
No, no.
Okay.
No, not with his letter, but, um, the letter that he did on the appeal on the last one on, um, Swains, I sent that to the attorney and she come back with, he totally doesn't understand six seventy-four forty-one, paragraph two.
Right. Are there any issues?
And you guys were supplied that letter from her too.
Yeah. Are there any issues in this letter regarding this lot that were, were not raised in the prior letter regarding the other lot?
The only one raised on this one that was not raised on the other one, well, yeah, I guess it was raised on the other one because he, he went in about not being in a, um, notified.
Yep.
And this one here, he wasn't notified either. I was thinking because he brought up about being a better, but according to being a better, it's across the lake or a stream, not, I mean, across the brook or stream or road. It doesn't include across the lake.
Okay.
And then if you read the RSA, it, it refers you exactly to how you're supposed to notice and who gets noticed anyways. That's what we just went over earlier. I can see if I got the letter, the first one from, what was that, like, three months ago? I can look it up if I got it here and I can email it over to everybody. If you've got your computer, so you can look at it. But I can't put it up on the screen because of the attorney-client privilege.
Yeah, um, so let's take another step. Was there anybody else here to speak in opposition? No, there's nobody else here who wants to be heard on this matter? Okay, um, so I understand two people would like to submit it again to counsel. Um, I don't know if there's a third one. I don't know if somebody wants to make a motion that we continue it to seek legal advice to the next month. Um, I don't, that's what we would have to do.
I'll make a motion and then we continue the case to next month and ask for legal opinion on it.
I'll second that.
Okay, I'm going to do a roll.
I got, I, I got Laura's opinion here up on my computer. I can email that to everybody so you would see it if you want to read it before you take the vote.
I think, I think actually Ray also wants to look at the statute a little bit and understand the statute a little bit more. I might be wrong, but I'm reading between the lines and having worked with Ray for fifteen years that he wants to look at it a little bit more. Ray, am I right?
You're right, yes. There's a lot here, there's a lot here.
Yeah, Ray, Ray, if you don't have Laura's thing, because I don't think you were at the meeting when they did that other one of the other island.
I vaguely recall something, but.
But if you don't have Laura's, um, response, if you get ahold of me, I can email it to you so you have it.
John, I'd appreciate the same, uh, information, please.
Okay, I'll make sure I send it. I'll send it to the whole board, how's that?
Thank you.
And.
I made a motion.
And there's a second from George. I have to do a roll call vote. Mary?
Yes.
Um, I think I did. Cheryl?
No.
George?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Karen Forbes, no. But it passes and it's going to be continued to next month in order to get, um, input from our counsel. Okay?
Just for clarification, am I supposed to send the question to the counsel? I mean, what am I, what is this email?
John, we can talk about it offline.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
All right. Um, we're going to move on to the next case, which is one oh five dash six dash GR dash twenty dash ZBA, um, BAR. Owner Gwen L. Early is the applicant present?
Uh, yes.
Is now exiting.
Gwen Early, pre, present?
Uh, yeah, I'm her husband.
Okay, can you state your na, name for the record?
Andre B. Petron.
Okay, so is, are you both the owners of the property?
Uh, her name is on that record.
Hey, do you have a?
For twenty-three years.
Do you have a letter authorizing you?
Uh, no.
No.
I believe she had signed off on something, um.
Yeah, but.
Yeah, they did sign a letter in the packet.
We are applying for a variance and it's signed by both of them.
I know, but what's our rules, sir?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Well, while we do this, why don't we, um, move through this and maybe, uh, we'll get a letter authorizing you to have spoken for her after the fact. How about that?
That works for me if you're willing to accept that.
Good. We're willing to be flexible.
Thank you.
Do you want to, um, present your case?
Uh, we are looking to have a generator installed. Uh, where it is now is no longer in code. And, um, where we would like to put it, which is about three feet off of our driveway, is actually the, uh, on the, well, we were assuming it was on the property that abuts it, which we also own. Um, I had a, a survey done and it actually kind of shows that the line, they, they put the generator just over the line, like I assumed it was, but judging by their lot map here that they did the plot plan, it will be within the, the property line, but it's not within the thirty-foot setback, which the house in the driveway isn't anyways. Corner of the driveway, the lot, the plot line runs very close to it, like within feet.
Okay.
And where, where we're looking to put it, it makes the most sense because there is already a propane line from where the tanks are that go to the house. And if we had to put it anywhere else, we would have to dig up, um, and add a line somewhere to get it to it. But we have a septic system back there. Um, the other corner of the house is a lot of big, big pine trees and they would have to dig up and cut roots to, to do the trench, which would kill the trees.
So you own both these lots, huh?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
The, uh, lot number five is in a trust. The one that, point seven acres is in a trust. And, uh, lot six is, there is no trust. Two different owners, the way the, it's red.
That's on the tax.
We.
It's on the tax, Chair.
Okay.
Yeah, we put that property in a trust. And Gwen and my name are both on that trust. We are executors.
So technically he would need an easement, that's all.
Yep.
Is, excuse me, is this easement just for like one foot?
Yeah, he needed an easement for that.
Okay.
I mean, that's between, he owns, unless he sells it. If he sells it, he doesn't have to do the easement. Unless he moves the generator back on. And the problem is it's one foot from the lot line, that's the issue?
Yeah, the, um, the way that, uh, Barrington did it, the way they, where they located the proposed generator location, looks to me it's actually further away than where I mapped it out, um, on the property. Because if that driveway, I don't see looking at the plot plan, if that driveway is ten feet wa, ten feet wide, then that generator is about, what, six feet away? It's not that far away. We don't propose it to be that far away. It's probably going to be about maybe three feet away. And of course, depending on exactly where the line is, because they don't want to put it on top of the line, the propane line that runs up to the house.
Does anybody have a question?
No.
If I could just clarify a little bit. If it was the propane tank, because of the way our definition for structures are, they could put that right up to the property line. But where it's the generator, it's, it's one of the things that are listed that are exempt from setbacks. So it requires the thirty feet. That's the whole reason why we're here.
Okay.
That generator could not be put to the rear of the house?
Uh, the septic is back there.
But where, you, you. The diagram does not show any existing, uh, septic, way of knowing that.
No, and I, they were supposed to. I don't know why they did. I paid them to be accurate on this and they put the well in there. Um, even the shape of the house is incorrect. Where the driveway ends at the top, there's a cutback because where it says existing driveway points to between the living room and the bedroom.
I see that.
That back corner where it says existing driveway, which is on the other side of the house, um, that's the bedroom there and that's where all the pine trees are. And the holding tank is, um, pretty much right there on the backside of the house. And then the, the, the leak field is next to that. Pretty much where it says UG Electric, that's pretty much the, the general area of the, uh, of the, the septic field.
You showed the existing septic area for the other lot.
Yeah, but not the one that we wanted, that needed to be shown.
Any questions from anybody?
No. No, I don't have a problem with it.
Ray?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Um, is there anybody there to speak in favor? Anybody there to speak in opposition? Hearing that, we'll close the public testimony portion of the meeting and the board can discuss the situation. Any thoughts by anybody?
To accept it?
Yep.
Well, we have to talk about the, the lot, the location, the septic system. You said trees to the rear, so there's some.
When they talk, when they show, the drive, the, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, forgive me.
George?
The, uh, they're showing the proposed generator, but they're also showing you it's one foot off the boundary line. So now you're going to have the, uh, the platform for which to mount the generator on is going to be one foot over and it's going to be further into the other piece of property. So it'll be greater than one foot if we grant this. And now they exist, you know, so I'm, I'm going back to the same, same thing that I've discussed with you in the past is that it's just not a, a complete drawing with the dimensions in it.
I have a question. On the agenda here, it said that they're asking to allow a side setback of twenty-nine feet where thirty is required. So I thought he was just going to be one foot into the setback.
That was never my statement, that it was that much. I got, I read that when I got the, uh, the agenda. I was just looking to put the generator, because I was assuming that it was just where we saw the, uh, the pins for the markers of the property, uh, and I was shown a town map, I believe, by the generator connection and it showed the property line running within inches of the corner of the driveway. Uh, when we had the survey done, they showed the property line much further away from the corner of the driveway.
Okay.
And that's where they put the generator, just outside that line, when I think in actuality, it will probably be either on that line or just within it.
Okay.
Any other?
No, even.
It doesn't, it doesn't have that statement in his application, Madam Chair.
That is what?
They, uh, as on the agenda, the setback of, of twenty-nine feet where thirty is required. So that is not on his application, so he's correct in that statement.
Yeah, he didn't, he didn't write that.
I understand.
It's actually into the, it's just, it's into the other lot, isn't it?
Yes.
Actually, it should be very for the other lot.
Right, it's there to be on the other lot.
Kind of an odd, odd case, for sure.
Correct, the variance would be on the lot that's not his house, because if the generator goes on that lot.
Right, so it should be on one oh five lot five, not one oh five lot six.
Well, I was assuming it would be this one because of observing, uh, lot six.
No, that's, that's all right. It's confusing, it's unusual one, but we can amend the application to say lot six, lot five.
Correct.
Any comments from anybody else?
No.
Is there a question?
Yeah, I don't see any issues. The, the generator, there's no other buildings, there's nothing over there on that side and they own both lots, so I don't really see an issue with it, so.
Two different names on the title, Mr. Ray.
Better do an easement before he sells it. Is there a second? Is there a second or not?
Second.
I thought you made the motion.
No, I didn't.
Okay. All right, um, so we'll do a roll call. Um, Mary?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
George?
No.
Ray?
Yes.
Karen Forbes, yes. And approved, Mr., um, Petron. Just get us a letter from your wife or an email even saying you had authority to represent her, okay? Oh, wait.
Okay, we'll do it.
We switched the lot. So you're one of the trustees, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so we're all set.
Okay, all right, all right.
Okay, so, um, anybody want to go over the minutes? Did we get the minutes?
Yeah. I was there, so.
George, anything with the minutes?
No ma'am, I wasn't present.
Anybody else?
I didn't see any adjustments, I think it looks pretty good.
Okay, any, um, motion to approve?
Motion to accept.
And all in favor, um, Mary?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
I'm staying. I'm staying and, all right, and I vote yes. Okay, so the minutes are approved. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mary?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Karen Forbes, yes, okay, we've adjourned. Um, John, I'm going to try and call you tomorrow about the opinion, okay?